Of the project to blackboard to order. You will come along. This case.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
The parrot thing here.
That must be right on this here.
The first thing after we call to order is public comments on non agenda items.
In those areas.
Yes.
I had a question concerning um follow up to a letter from. Denny Hall a little bit back about the um. Uh Powder House getting on to and and. Um that was a that that was a private group that did that. Um but is it, why is it that we are now responsible for? Having those units put on the subsidized housing inventory.
So we have a we have a role to play in just trying to facilitate that.
Right.
We um it's a faster process if you endorse it. So that's ours.
Yeah.
So that's our role.
Um but they.
Does rely on uh in this case, the uh.
The North Shore CDC.
CDC to fill out some paperwork and in particular to. Um spell out their. Um tenant selection process.
I guess my question is really, why is it that we are being? Put into the the lead on this when our job is to endorse it, but? How is it that they raised the money, got this through to North Shore CDC? And now they want the town to take over? Having it actually considered by the state.
Well, we can't take it all. We can we can only play a role of facilitating it. Maybe place on it, but it.
I guess that was not a good way of putting it um because we're not taking it over per se, but I would say driving the bus on this one. And I I guess I guess my concern is. That this is not, this was not a town endeavor. And I'm concerned that that. It will be misunderstood what the town is doing. So that's, I just wanted to ask where it was and.
I think we do have a role to play, though, as Greg said.
Yeah.
And and from my perspective. Um I don't under- it sounded like simple paperwork. That had to be filled out. I think the resident had a question. It is simple.
It's not.
In his view, it was simple paperwork, and if it's not.
It's been going on, my my, it's been going on for a long time.
If I can finish, though, I think. There is a um disconnect between uh. The perception of the group that funded this, right, as to how difficult it is for North Shore to fill in the paperwork and get it submitted.
Yeah, that's okay.
And and I just think a little clarification would be helpful because it is in the town's best interests.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Get that paperwork in.
Yeah.
And and I think the residents are asking for our help. And there just may be a misunderstanding that a little clarification might go a long way.
Um I'm gonna ask Sarah Mosh a question. Didn't John step up and say he was gonna try to help that out, help help that along? Yeah, uh the last Z B A meeting, John there, John Benares.
Good.
Who uh does this for a living? Offered to to take a look at that, as I recall. I don't know to what extent he was going to go, but.
We are um, no, sure, CDC is one of his clients, and you felt that you could talk to them and find out exactly.
Okay.
That's awesome. It just, because it's in the town's interest to protect us from forty forty Bs that are unhealthy.
To get that. The town has to add things to the S H I of private citizen or not.
Right, and but in addition to that, if I might, it's. Whether that's on the S H I or not is not going to impact Shingle Hill.
It won't, but we don't want another Shingle.
No, we don't.
Right, and so that's that's the sense of urgency, I think.
One, even twenty more.
Right.
Is gonna help.
Yeah.
But but North Shore, North Shore is the driver for this, is that correct?
Yeah.
All all, they're the ones that really should be in the driver's seat making this happen. Okay.
Does anyone know? How many of the units have been through the process of being um advertised and?
I don't have an update on the number now. We could we could get that. I just don't, I just don't know.
Yeah. And it would probably be a good idea. There was an assumption that they would all go on all at once.
Right.
And and I think that's still hanging out.
Which I don't, CDC was was not wanting to evict any money. They were they were doing it as as attrition occurred.
Right, yeah.
So it's it is happening slowly.
Maybe in your cookies three times. You could find out what the state is now and include it in a paragraph somewhere in one of your. Break it right.
Yeah.
Let people know that progress is being made, but. They didn't want to evict people. Yes, Sarah.
It's my understanding that you only need twenty five percent of the units to actually be affordable. In order to have all twenty nine registered.
Right.
My understanding would be, I think it's seven, if I counted right. Um I think they had all of those units.
Okay.
Done when they originally filed the paperwork. Nine months ago.
I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. I think it. Two years is a long time and and but a clarification is in order because it could really be helpful to the town.
Are there any other comments on issues not? Including people online, people around. Okay, um so there is no chairman's report. And um the. Um it looks. As if we are up to date. On the um action current action items. The number being pushed off to. The second of January. I I. Like to respect the second of January um to things that won't be a great public interest and don't need to be um publicized. Not having a hearing on something that everybody cares about, that they don't hear about until after they get home.
You're referring to Ocean Street?
I'm, yes, Ocean Street um. Um we will schedule a public hearing, that's easy. Anything else on the action list?
Should we add um Powder House? Lane to the act so that we can just keep on top of that and?
I I I think that would be a good idea. We do have a role to play.
Yes.
Where the paperwork gets filed, so.
Okay, so on the sixteenth of. Sixty January.
In the meantime, should one of us reach out to John Benares and see what he's doing or how?
Give me touch base with John.
Okay, excellent. That part.
Wait, um. The next item on the agenda is the tax.
I move the select board opens to classification hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please.
Yes.
This is all.
Yes.
And and John.
Yes.
Answered yes. Please.
My name is Michelle Brandt, supporting and assisting for the town of Manchester, New York City. Tonight, we have with us. Um Mr. Jeff McAlvey, the chairman of the Board of Assessors. So we are here um for the classification hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty four. The purpose of the classification hearing is to determine the allocation of a local property task to be borne by the four classes of real properties. And personal property, which is for year twenty four. And regarding the allocation, the select board must adopt a residential factor. The residential factor is used to determine the percentage of the tax levy that is applied for each. Class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies the percentages. The individual property classes. According to the Mash General laws, chapter forty, section fifty six. The select board must vote on the following. We have four items that we need a vote on tonight. The classification shift of tax rate. Residential exemption. The small commercial exemption. And the open space discount. Um some information, some salient information and facts about fiscal year twenty twenty four. Um new growth. Is likely up this year from last year due to um. Building permits on the residential side, on the residential class. Um. Commercial class has decreased from last year. New growth, we didn't have much going on this year. Personal property new growth increased over the last year due to the utility appraisals, our five oh fours. That we are mandated yearly by the State of the Department of Revenue to conduct. Yearly basis. So residential new growth is eighty percent. Of the overall this year. With commercial and thus uh industrial and personal property together twenty percent. Uh the total taxable value for the town of fiscal year twenty four is three billion, three hundred and ninety seven billion, seven hundred and sixty eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen. And ninety four percent of this. Is designated to the residential portion. We don't have any open space in town. And the other six percent to commercial, industrial and personal property. Um there's a breakdown of the tax levy underneath. And you can see the very last line. We have an unused. Levee limit, which is also known as the excess levy capacity of six hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety five dollars and forty three cents. So to go on to the first item, we will need a vote on is the tax rate. The residential factor for the tax rate. The residential factor adopted by a community governs the percentage of the tax levy that is to be paid by the residential property owners. A residential factor of one will result. Um in the taxation of all property at the same rate, which we also. Uh know this as uniform tax rate. Basically, your residential and commercial, industrial, personal property would be. All at one rate. However, the law allows the commercial, industrial and personal property tax rate for the town of Manchester by the sea to be as high as fifty percent above the uniform rate. And the residential open space. To be as low as sixty five percent of the uniform rate. Historically, Manchester by the sea has always maintained a single rate. Shifting the tax onto the commercial, industrial properties would create a tax burden for those properties while the residential properties only benefit. From a small saving. Manchester's total tax evaluation is comprised of ninety four percent of potential. And these percent, commercial, industrial. And personal properties. So the details are on spreadsheets on pages ten and eleven. So. Page ten um basically shows the shift in the overall levy, if you were to shift. Uh ten percent, twenty percent, forty or fifty percent, how it would shift from the residential class to commercial, industrial and personal property. And then if we move. To page eleven is where you actually see the shift. If we were to shift the tax rate by ten percent. From residential C I P. We would show a saving of eighty four dollars and forty one cents. If we were to ship. The full fifty percent. It would be a saving to the average residential value, so that would include single families, condos, vacant land. Um apartment buildings. In an average, um it would be a decrease of four hundred and twenty two dollars and three cents. However. The ten percent shift. Would increase the average commercial value by eight hundred and seventy four dollars and sixty four cents. And the increase of fifty percent would increase. The average commercial tax rate. Uh tax amount by four thousand, three hundred and fifty four dollars and sixty one cents. So you can see what that shift would basically impact commercial and industrial properties. The second item that we need to um have a vote on tonight is the residential exemption. And the select board may adopt an exemption of up to thirty five percent to shift the tax burden within the residential class. From owners of moderately valued residential properties that are the principal residents of a taxpayer. To a higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residents. Or domicile of a taxpayer, second homes, for example. This is not an actual exemption, but it is a shift of residential taxes to non owner occupied property owners. This exemption was originally adopted by several Cape Cod communities as a means of forcing summer residents to pay a higher share. Of the tax levy. Than would year round residents. Cities such as Cambridge, Somerville and Boston have adopted the residential exemption. Because they have a significant amount of non owner occupied multifamily properties such as apartment complexes. Since most residential property owners in this community consider Manchester by the sea to be their principal residence. Adoption of the residential exemption would. Serve only to increase the residential tax rate while providing a tax increase. To all Manchester by the sea residential property owners. Whose assessed value is over the average of one million, four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. To adopt such an exemption in a community where a large majority of the residential properties are owner occupied. Places an unjustified additional burden to the other residences. Scenario of the shift. Within worksheet residential exemption, and that is on page twelve. We have approximately sixteen hundred single family properties that could potentially qualify for this exemption. So that would drive up the residential tax rate for the rest of the properties, not the that are above the average residential value. Small commercial exemption is item number three. This exemption is similar to the residential exemption above. It is beneficial to communities with a high presence of large commercial properties. It shifts the burden within a commercial class. From small businesses. That are valued under a million dollars with an average of ten or less employees. During the previous calendar year. To larger ones and to parcels in the industrial class. In order for a commercial parcel to qualify. Every business occupying the parcel must also qualify for the exemption. Since most businesses in Manchester by the sea are small, we would not see a relief in taxes. We would see an additional tax burden to larger commercial and industrial properties. The exemption goes to the building owner. Not the business owner. Therefore, depending on lease agreements, a small business owner may or may not benefit from this exemption. And then I gave some examples of communities who have adopted this exemption, Avon, Braintree, Somerset, Westford. Assessors may determine the annual employment for a sole proprietorship or partnership. For all other businesses, they must reply, uh rely solely on the determination of the Director of Labor and Workplace Development. An annual application process is required confirming payroll information. And the details and the impact of a small commercial exemption are listed on page thirteen. And the last item we will need a vote on tonight is open space discount. We currently do not have any lane classified as open space, but if we did. The select board could then grant such an exemption percentage of up to twenty five percent as decided by vote. Of the select board each year. The discount may reduce the amount of the levy paid by the open space class. To no less than seventy five percent of its full and fair cash share of the tax levy. The select board by an annual vote may allow for discount for all class two open space properties. Adopting an open space discount. Lowers the open space tax rate because the amount of the levy paid by the class is reduced. Those taxes are shifted to the residential class alone, which means a higher residential tax rate. So of the three hundred and fifty one communities in Massachusetts nineteen. Classified property is open space. And some of those communities are Ashland, Bedford, Berlin. Beverly, Dennis. Irving, Falmouth, Lemonster. Um Nantucket, New Ashford, Mashpee, Newburyport. Norfolk, Paxton Rowley, South Hadley and Starbridge. And actually Wentworth as well. And um there are more details on page fourteen regarding the open space discount.
Are there any questions?
I just have, yeah, just one question and that. The total total taxable value went up. Fourteen percent.
Yes.
That's purely based on sales of units here in town?
It's based on sales and it's based on improvements. Improvements and um additions.
Okay, all right, so it's not just sales of uh.
No, improvements as well.
Okay, I'm just curious how the sales compare with other years for this past year. I know real estate's been. Quieter.
So.
Perhaps.
It has been quieter, but only because the inventory is so low.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
I'm just curious what the end number is that you you get to fourteen percent on. In other words, sales are.
So the end number is sales.
Yeah.
And also um. Like I said, improvements, rents are high, so when we do our income approach, that's that's up as well. So all of those are taken into consideration.
I guess my question is, how many houses were sold in Manchester this year?
Um.
And how does that compare with last year, independent of these?
So I don't have that number in front of me, John, but um as far as arms length, not. Private sales or.
Yeah.
Divorces or about sixty five to seventy.
And how does that compare with previous years?
It's it's pretty much the same, pretty much the same amount, however. We're seeing a big. Amount of private sales. So forty nine percent of the sales in the residential class. Were quoted out as private sales. There were sales that never can be analyzed. Or the market.
That's what Mary Ann is.
So that's what we're seeing.
No ulterior motive here. Curious, but yeah, so that makes it hard to really know how the values are moving around, you know.
Hard to know how the values are moving around, but we also cannot use those sales.
Yeah.
Our analysis.
Understood.
And they're well above. Assessed value, but unfortunately we have to code those out and not use them.
It's about half.
Wow.
So.
We send out sales questionnaires, and of course, whenever I go out to inspections, I have conversations with the taxpayers, and I'm hearing. All the time. How I reached out to so and so because my son was looking for a woman down, and so we were willing to pay. Above asking just so that property would not be accepted. And we are actually continuing to see sales going up. That trend is.
Okay, good. Kind of. Makes the increase more more more. The more valid. The bigger the yen is, but.
I move that the select board close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second.
Becky.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Definitely, yes. Anne says yes.
John says yes.
You got the wrong thing, John.
Yes, I did. I got the next.
Um.
Trade off.
Okay. Um, do I hear um motions?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Um setting the residential tax rate for in fact.
Yes, I move the select board set the residential tax rate factor at one, resulting in a single tax rate for all properties.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? John.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
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 Becky says yes. Is there another motion?
Yes, I moved that the select board decline to offer any property tax exemptions.
This covers the exemption, the residential um and commercial exemptions.
Second.
Um, okay, I thought open face was a discount. But they all fit in.
They're all considered an exemption.
We're having anyway.
Right. Well, you can't play over trivia, what you. Okay.
I seconded that.
Good, good, motion second. Becky.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Anne says yes.
Um. I move, I I actually got one more.
We move the board close the public hearing.
Second.
Becky.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Anne says, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. You put a lot of work into this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's. It it sounds as if we don't care because we just pass whatever it was written down for us. But in fact.
I know you, yeah.
Very valuable information.
The documentation and analysis was excellent, as was the write up, which is why we walked in here understanding what you wanted.
Thank you.
Yes, very good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Anne, your committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk about schedules.
Fine, right?
The next item on our agenda. Is um the Z B A filing fee increase. And um we have description, um then. Ms. Mallon, would you share your opinion?
Sure. Sarah Mallon, Chair of the Z B A. Um I've done some research um and I looked through some old files and. The permit fee in two thousand and one was a hundred and seventy dollars. It was increased to two hundred and forty dollars, sometime between two thousand and one and two thousand and ten. Um when we did that increase, at that point in time, the applicants paid. The registry filing fee and paid for the butter list. Because those recordings didn't occur. At some point before my time, they changed it so that the town started paying the recording fees and the town paid for the a butter list. Um so. People are paying much less than we expected that they would pay um. Area towns range from three eighty to six fifty five for permits. Um currently, we have a separate fee for special permit variants and a combination of special permit and variants. The work required for that is the same, so I'm suggesting we have one fee. Um I looked at the actual fiscal year twenty three expenses. And the actual apps and our cost per app is a thousand, twenty seven dollars. So we're not exactly making money. And and so I'm recommending five hundred dollars for special permit variants or a combo. And a thousand dollars for a comprehensive permit, that's currently five hundred. The comprehensive permit would be forty B, which we can't even speak about how much that. Could cost us, but that fee includes. Reviewing the application. Following up multiple times with the applicants. Doing the a butters list and paying for the mailing. Um now, a lot of towns charge um for newspaper, public hearing posting, which we never have done. And then the registry deeds filing fee, which is now a hundred and five dollars per application. The five doll hundred dollars is one tenth of a percent of a five hundred thousand dollar project. Or one percent of a fifty thousand dollar project, and we don't see fifty thousand dollar projects because we only see applications if they're changing the footprint. Or adding a second story on a house that's in setback. Um so in the overall look, this is not a lot of money for an applicant to pay. The projects are big. Um you know, the only thing, the cheapest thing we see are swimming pools, and we're trying as hard as we can. To get those so they don't require a special permit. That hasn't gone very far. We get them every month. And I'm suggesting that we make it effective for applications filed after December thirty first.
Okay, so so question, so let's, the the, so the out of pocket cost on a five. Okay, so so question, so let's, the the, so the out-of-pocket cost on a five hundred dollar fee is the butters list, which otherwise, well, no, actually, actually, that's not an out-of-pocket cost, because that's coming through here.
The towns.
Yeah, the towns' out-of-pocket costs.
The towns' out-of-pocket costs are mailing for the butters.
Okay, okay.
Which depends on how many butters we are meeting. Um, and the registry of these filing fee of a hundred and five. And then the internal cost to of support, to do minutes.
Yes, all of that, okay.
Employee, employee costs.
And then the hearing notice.
Oh, yeah, the hearing notice posted in the paper and I honestly don't know what we're charged for that.
Alright.
It varies based on how big it is.
Right, it's it's a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so more than half is probably going out on out-of-pocket costs.
Yeah, more than half.
Yeah.
Becky. Um, does this at least break even?
No.
Right, so that's, that's.
We pay a thou, we cost us a thousand.
So why do we leave it so low?
I just was trying to be.
I mean, there are other towns that that you reported.
Yep.
That that do significantly more. And I don't see why we're subsidizing that or why we should.
So then a- applicants also pay for the building permit. That would be a separate fee. Uh, and that's based on value of construction.
But that goes to the building part. That's a different pot, right?
Well, all the money goes into the town coffers, but but yes, it's a separate process.
That's based on the fact that they, the assumptions they cut their permits. Same amount of work as according to denial as it is.
And we charge the same for the fee.
Right.
You charge again for an appeal?
Yes, it's a different applicant on each deal.
Right, okay.
And they've always been charged the same amount as the underlying permitted.
Can we look at this incrementally and maybe try to chip away at this thousand dollars? Start with this number that uh Sarah suggested and come back in a year or two years as opposed to one big jump now.
I I have a question around that. So you said that the appeals are charged the same amount, so they would also be charged five hundred dollars. Is it the same amount of work to for an appeal or is that less?
Usually more.
Usually more, okay.
Um, yes, usually town council is involved in an appeal or maybe involved in appeal and it's, and the problem with an appeal is, to be honest, we don't get as much information on an appeal as we do on an application.
Got it, okay.
And you got two sides on an appeal.
Did you consider having a separate dollar amount for an appeal and if not, why?
We've always had the same fee and it just doesn't make sense to have a whole bunch of different fees. We we have enough problems now collecting the direct fee based on whether it's a special permit or a variance or a combo. Sometimes things change in process and I don't see why an appeal would be less.
Right, so I'm I'm a big fan of one rate because I I think that's that's um easier, less bureaucratic, et cetera. However, I I I'm kinda thinking of the same thing Becky is. We, I'm wondering why we're not covering our costs and why we're subsidizing um privately funded um construction. Um, I'm not a huge fan of that. Um, so um, if we decide to take Brian's approach and uh do it a little bit at a time, can we at least go up to seven fifty? I mean, we're still not covering our costs. But we're getting closer to our costs and maybe then we can look at other ways that we can improve our efficiency to get our costs down.
And and additionally, it's just, we you, we haven't raised them in ages.
Right.
So so by by doing an increase, we're we're not even catching up, but but I think if we increase the current amount um this time to say seven fifty and then come back at another time.
I just, I I could go either seven fifty or a thousand, whatever. I just, it it strikes me as we don't want to take a big jump, but we're really impacting different people. I mean, how often does the same person come in front of the ZB A for a new project, right? Um, so I I I don't think we have to be as concerned about the junk because it's.
Certainly, when I did renovations to my house, I didn't even think of what, right, the the second permit fee was. It wasn't part of my equation. And I think that's true.
So I mean, I could go for the thousand, to be honest. If that's, if that, we have documented what the costs are and we're just trying to cover our costs, I think that's appropriate, um, as long as it's, but it's a little bit out of where the other towns are.
A thousand dollars is the average cost and I suspect that there are some that are less and a lot that are more.
I mean, we've had, yeah, we've had some that have been continued four or five times.
That's, I think that's the key thing.
That's the problem.
You know, and there's some people, they go right through. I paid a thousand bucks for what?
Yeah.
And there'll be the three, I don't know how many you go through in a year.
Well.
But there are a few outliers that just.
Twenty twenty-three, we had twenty-one applications. I think this year we're closer to between the twenty-five to thirty.
So you have to kinda walk a fine line without. I understand the problem.
Yeah. So the the outlier can, outliers tend to be swimming pools. The smallest, the lowest cost project.
Lowest cost would, uh, well, I don't know how much a swimming pool costs, but I think they're north of a hundred thousand based on what we're seeing. Yeah.
Okay, so even 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 a swimming pool is going to be more than fifty thousand, so.
Yeah, I I. There's no project that you can do for fifty thousand if you're doing a swimming pool or impacting the footprint of your home. You can do, I don't, maybe you can do fifty thousand renovation, dollar renovations, but um.
Within the footprint, yes.
Yeah, within the footprint. Um, and that doesn't come before us.
Right.
Um. Personally, I have a reluctance to cut the dog's tail off an inch at a time. Um, I I.
Not get it one time.
I don't wanna come back next year and talk about this again.
Yeah.
So I would take a motion for a higher fee. And a single, a single fee for um.
Comprehensive permit.
A s- a single fee, a single that dollar amount for special permit variants um or com uh or combination.
A thousand and fifteen hundred for uh.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive.
If 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 that, the comprehensive is only for forty Bs.
Yes. So not gonna see too many of them.
So, is there?
Uh, so there's a motion. What is, is, is that a thousand or you're gonna fifteen hundred?
That's on just comprehensive.
The fifteen hundred would be for comprehensive, which we don't see very often.
One thousand for.
How many did you put into that category this year?
S L V.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not, that's not a, the average person here, even the above-average person, this is not, okay, okay. Alright, so fifteen hundred and five hundred.
No. Those for the increase of.
Cut the dog's tail off.
I move that the board increase the DBA filing fee for special permits and variances to one thousand dollars and fifteen hundred dollars for the comprehensive permits to go into effect with the first of the new year.
What about P D C?
Yeah, I was gonna say a friendly amendment uh to include um combination um permits at a rate of one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Amendment accepted.
Give me a second.
Okay.
The amendment and the, well, the motion to start with.
Yeah, but do you have that?
It's recorded.
Okay.
Watching Paul Mar.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Becky.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Cathy, yes. Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good.
You're welcome.
You know, the difference to me is, I think sometimes the select people, select just raise things arbitrarily.
I was just nervous to make a recommendation to change it that much. I think if Brian would load it down.
My concern was culture shock. But then again, if no one's, if they're not applying, you know, they're putting a mil, hundred thousand, twenty thousand dollars. It's not a five hundred dollars.
Most people don't even know.
Don't even know.
Right, right, disappears into the contract.
Mm-hmm.
Don't throw me under the bus.
Thank you. Um, it, I I think we have handled that. Um, we're into discussion items and the first is the harbor management plan update.
We have Brian on Zoom.
We do. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Brian.
I'm trying to let you see me, not that you want to. Yeah, there we go. Uh, so the harbor management's committee has uh had two meetings and one site visit with the contractor, Urban Harbors Institute. Uh, we spent about four hours on the boat. Um, one of the committee members, myself and uh for three folks from Urban Harbors. And uh covered the entire uh Manchester waterfront from Chubb Creek all the way up to the Magnolia um line with Gloucester. The takeaway, uh, well, so uh the discussion with the group has been whether or not we should move forward with a municipal plan or uh the larger state plan, which takes more time. Uh, the initial thought was the municipal plan uh after the site visit, Urban Harbors started a discussion at the last meeting about whether or not it should be a state plan, given the amount of um chapter ninety-one related land there is um in town. And what may happen with the development of that in the future. So it's still very much in the early stages. Uh, there's another meeting on the eighteenth. I think the group will move closer to uh making a recommendation on whether or not it should be a state municipal plan and there will be probably sometime in January, February, a moment when the town will have to decide whether or not to move forward with that or or hold with the municipal.
What are the advantages of the state plan?
Uh, so if the state approves your harbor management plan, uh, if you, if if the town is looking for uh ways to manage development, let's say a piece of waterfront property sold. The state absolutely positively steps in in those cases to make sure that uh the towns, within the town's legal rights, that there are requirements for a project be met. This is only on the um Phil Tidlins uh chapter ninety-one, so uh in Manchester, that would be uh Beach Street, Harbor Point, uh going back into Tappan Street. Um, the Crocker Manchester Marine Waterfront. Uh, those are all areas uh that are chapter ninety-one that would be of concern for future development, so. The short answer is the state backs you up on uh any requirements or restrictions that uh you may legally place on development.
Other questions?
And what is the flip side of that, of uh of uh the state plan?
Uh, the flip side?
Disadvantages per se.
Uh, I don't know of any. Uh, that will probably come up at the uh meeting on the eighteenth. The committee, I know uh several of the committee members want to be very clear about uh whether or not there are any downsides to that for the town.
One question, Brian, uh kinda just high level. Um, what's your timeline for completing this harbor master, um harbor of management plan?
Uh, a year to two years.
From when?
Uh, I would say from uh when the contract was signed, uh September, I think. So probably on the safe side, throw throw it in the middle eighteen months, so uh, March of twenty twenty-five.
If it's a state plan, does that probably affect the timeline somehow?
It does, so that that would make it probably closer to two years, municipal, about a year, so in the middle.
There are other questions? Thank you very much.
Stumer.
Forward to hearing the results of the eighteenth, but we don't choose to be there. And we have a meeting anyway. Here we have a meeting that day, well, I assume.
Okay.
I'll be happy to share.
Um, the uh next uh discussion item is the launch service options. And I guess Brian is on again.
Right, so I I guess uh maybe I should throw it back to you if you have any uh specific questions. Manchester Morning has decided they're going to uh relinquish operating a launch in town. Uh, they would like to uh see it remain in town. This was their first year profit profitability. Um, there's been a a fair number of users of that launch service who've written emails and uh had communication that I forwarded on to um the selectman's office. And there is a lot of desire to see that service stay here. And uh Manchester Morning has offered to sell uh everything, uh including both of the launches uh for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the town. I guess the only thing I would add to that is if there were a um private entity or individual who came forward and expressed a desire to to buy that from uh Manchester Morning, uh, the town should step out of the way. We should never get in the way of of uh somebody wanting to uh run a small business, but uh there hasn't been anybody yet who's expressed any interest.
I have some questions. Um, through to your Brian, has it, do you know if it's been advertised?
I have no idea. That's that's up to the bakers. I I don't know uh what they've done to promote or sell. Selling a launch service uh in and of itself, just as a launch service, doesn't hold a whole lot of appeal. It usually uh goes hand in hand with um uh another service such as mooring or uh in my instance, when I worked at Hawthorne Cove Marina in Salem, we had uh moorings and two launches that serviced the boats on those moorings. So as a standalone, it has less appeal.
Right.
Do you have any idea how many employees uh worked at Manchester Morning before?
I I think Tom had four launch operators this last season.
Including, but then plus himself were four.
I I'm sorry.
Plus himself or?
Oh, right, so if you wanna add Tom uh in in Charlie, probably half a dozen.
Uh, the, do your numbers include or um staff include Tom and Charlie?
Uh, I do not know. Those, that was the op, those are the numbers that they sent over to me that I put. Uh, I do not know. Those that was the op, those are the numbers that they sent over to me that I put uh into that spreadsheet. They didn't indicate, they did not indicate one way or the other.
So by and I have a a couple of questions. Um, number one, I'm looking at the numbers and maybe it's in here, but I'm just not seeing it. But I don't see numbers for planned obsolescence of the boat itself. Well, you know, at some point you have to replace the launch, so.
Absolutely right.
So are are those dollars included in these numbers?
No, I don't think Tom, I don't think Tom included those in the numbers he sent over.
Okay, so.
Certainly didn't indicate it.
Right, because I think for any financial analysis, you want total cost of ownership, which includes replacing the boat at the end of its useful life. Um, so that was question one. Question two, also on the staffing. It's it's been my experience that people don't um voluntarily give up profitable businesses, lots of businesses, unless they're a pain in the neck and my own experience with launch services has been that that they're really tough to staff. You need the captain's license or whatever. And and so just, you know, following up on Ann's question. How many people do you really need to staff this service and what would the hours be? And then what happens if someone's out there in the in the ocean and they're after hours, you know, oops, I came back late, you know, so I'm just trying to understand that whole staffing. Um, picture because it's been my experience that, you know, some of the marinas have given up their launch service because it's it's tough from a staffing standpoint.
Uh, so I can tell you Hawthorne Cove Marina, we had very clear cut hours. If if you came in late, then you came into the dock and you got a dinghy and you went back out to Mauring and you rode back in. Or you paid for space at the dock for overnight and uh came down in the morning morning and got a launch right in. That's how, that's how we handle that uh. Probably four people um would be adequate to staff the launch for the season. The the advantage that the harbor department has is that all of the harbor masters are required to have merchant marine operators licenses, which are much higher and carry much more weight than just a launch operator's license. So now we have, we have staff um who would be uh able to fill in in times of shortage.
Um, with with that by on, if if you're using harbor, your your staff, are there any responsibilities from which they're being pulled?
Right, so that would, that would not be the norm, but I will tell you that on the shoulders of the season, when my staff starts the first of May and then uh are on duty until the end of October, May and October are much quieter. And we aren't there to deal so much with the day to day in and out uh traffic like we are in the summertime, but we're standing by uh for those distress calls for boaters that are moving their boats from place to place, getting ready to haul out. Uh, dealing with pumpouts, uh end of season pumpouts, so uh the harbor master staff uh would be able to cover the shoulder parts of the season, particularly if if we had uh college age staff who uh returned to school. I have two retired gentlemen who work for Tom Baker that want to be kept apprised of
My my thoughts are this is currently a privately run business making a profit. So if the town were to take it over, it should be whole wholly um uh the expenses should be wholly covered by the launch fees or the subscription service to to the launch. Not one penny of taxpayer dollars should go to this service. And I wouldn't want us to be having to hire new town employees to cover the launch service. So if we had to add additional staff at some point, because maybe it wouldn't be a popular service and maybe we would want to increase the staff, would we be able to do that without making them town employees? And are we sure the cost can be covered by a subscription fee? Because like I said, I don't see the all of the costs in the spreadsheet that by on gave us. It does not include, you know, saving for a new boat. I don't know what the rest of the useful life is on the boat, but you you've got to figure that into your total cost of ownership, and I don't see those numbers in here.
Right, so the the uh the bigger launch, the licensed uh launch is three years old, uh that's going to last. Uh, and 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 uh is familiar with the launches up at the yacht club. They'll last at least twenty years. The uh smaller launch that uh would come with it has a brand new engine, brand new transmission with twenty hours uh total running time. So th- those, both those boats have, if maintained properly, twenty years of uh useful expected life.
Yeah.
I I also believe that the the number of customers uh sixty is the current number uh that Manchester Marine uh has, Mauring has is very low and it will take very, very little to get uh more people to sign on uh to the launch service. And if if it's making money right now, every new launch customer will only uh add more black ink to the numbers.
I think I think Becky was also aware that um I the launches, at least the launches the club have cost a lot more than twelve hundred dollars to maintain.
Right, well, uh there's a lot of support for the launch service, I agree. That's what caught, it costs Tom Baker with his brand new launch this last year to have it uh hauled uh winterized, stored and then launched uh in the spring for service at uh Crocker's Boatyard. Crockers and Manchester Marina both expressed a strong desire to see the launch service in town because uh folks who use their moorings take advantage of those launches. And Skip Crocker's told me that if the town is going to take over uh the launch service, then uh he would offer that haul service winterize and launch in the spring for five hundred dollars. That's where that number comes from. Extremely generous.
But he's not interested in running this, so.
Right.
And neither is Manchester Marines.
Nope.
One has to ask why, yeah.
Why, why are they getting rid of it?
No, why is Manchester Marine, why are Manchester Marine instructors not interested in running this third public interference?
Uh, they don't have the facilities, they don't have uh a lot of mooring customers, they don't. Manchester Marine, right before he started, as I understood it, did try to do a launch service. And the challenge you uh, I think Becky or Kathy uh mentioned was the staffing, having licensed people, that's an ongoing challenge, uh you know, uh yacht club has it every year. Getting uh licensed launch drivers. And just like Gloucester, who bought the second brand new launch this year because their launch uh numbers have gone up so much. Uh, we have at our beck and call staff who already have licenses. We are faced with that challenge.
Um, I have one other question and this this um requires your magic ball. Is, is it possible that the this increase in launch service is partly due to um the increase in boat ownership, which happened during COVID? And will it continue? I I guess my big concern is if we do this and the interest in voting perhaps subsides a little bit, especially if fuel prices continue to go up, is there, is there any evidence this is more of an anomaly than a a trend that'll continue?
So the 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 boat sales uh really don't have any impact because it didn't change the number of moorings in the harbor. And we're servicing Mauring customers. And we have the same number of moorings, actually a few less than we we did right before the pandemic hit. Uh, so that those numbers won't change. Uh, is it possible that people would be less willing to use a launch service if things became tighter financially for folks? Sure, absolutely. That that happens whenever there's an economic downturn.
So do you know, um, so I guess my current thinking is need more information specifically on the business model and the numbers. You you've got to include replacement cost for the boat, even if it's twenty years away, we plan for, you know, a fire truck to be um, you know, but twenty-five or twenty years on, that that should not preclude including that analysis and the numbers. The other thing is you've got to know your break even. How many subscribers, if you're going to charge whatever it is, five hundred, what would your break even point? So I'm looking for a business model analysis, not so much can the town, just can the town help, right?
Town is being asked to pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the launch now. And there's nothing in this that will amortize that cost.
Well, then, yeah, my my first statement was I don't want one penny of town tax dollars to be used for this, is kind of my, um, I I still have that opinion. Um, the launch service would um benefit very few of our fifty-four hundred residents uh in town, so I just feel it should be a self-sustaining entity, a self-contained um, you know, business.
I absolutely agree.
I'm just not quite sure that we can walk through that all tonight. Um, it might make sense for each of us to kind of to give Greg and by on the feedback that we're looking for, perhaps have, you have two members of FinCom sitting right there and perhaps they can advise us.
As soon as, as soon as we find ourselves out, I'm going to give them an opportunity.
So I have a question, by on. What what's involved in being a licensed boat captain? Uh, that that seems to be a a challenge here, the staffing. And is that a big deal or is that something like uh getting a driver's license?
No, no, it's it's a little more involved than that. It took me uh four years working on a boat, uh eight months out of the year for minimum of eight hours a day before.
These people aren't walking around on the street.
Right, that, no, they aren't, uh but that's one of the requirements for being a a harbor master is that you do have a captain's license. It, you're not walking around everywhere, but uh they are out there. And they are looking to get jobs driving boats. I I would add that as far as uh an in-depth financial analysis, I I will do the best I can. I I, that is not really my wheelhouse. I can, and I can tell you that the replacement cost for that boat today, just the one boat. Not the two that are coming for the hundred and twenty-five thousand. Approaching a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to have that boat uh built brand new today. Uh, if the town doesn't want to uh get into the launch service, then Manchester Mauring will sell that boat easily for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. They've had offers from brokers for that already. Um, they would love to see the service that they've started remain here. The reason they're getting out of it, they have now they've reached the point where they're they're at eleven hundred Mauring customers. And that keeps them busy enough that they don't want to do the launch service anymore. They don't need to do it, but they also recognize that there is a need in the town for uh the four hundred or so boaters who aren't members of the yacht club, uh who are getting older, who uh like the convenience and appreciate having this launch service here.
All right, they said there are eleven hundred customers right now.
He has eleven hundred mooring customers, not launch customers.
Which are, which are, which are a natural audience for him. I mean, he's mailing you know, mooring bills to all of these folks once or twice a year.
Right.
I personally know I got a flyer.
Yeah, also.
My boring, so he's chasing those folks if you don't have a dinghy.
The morning, well, not not for launch service anymore, uh but the the mooring business. Uh, his competitors are retiring and getting out of the business. His son wants to take over, so the mooring business is really their focus and not the launch. And while it made money this year, they just felt like it 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 wasn't where they wanted to devote their time and energy.
Um, is there anyone in the audience?
I'll ask a question and
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Byron. You get payment for your moorings like by March first or something like that?
Right, so that's when everyone uh is required to have their annual mooring fee paid, yes.
Is it, is it possible to get a commitment? More holders in advance regarding whether they would be willing to take the service or not?
So if if the town decides to move forward with this, that would be one of the vehicles uh that I would use to let Mauring holders know that this is an option for them here in Manchester. And uh absolutely, I I think I would, what I would probably do for those sixty customers who like to pay the annual fee and not uh per use fee, there are different fee structures, how how these work, but uh those sixty folks who like to pay that annual fee, we would just roll it right into their uh mooring dinghy uh uh waitlist, whatever it is uh that they uh are paying. And and make that part of the process, one process. Did that, did I hit the mark or did I miss it?
Now, I'm just, I haven't seen any of the numbers, so it's it's hard for me to react, but it's um
Yeah.
Sixty doesn't sound like very many feet.
It it isn't.
Yeah, I just have a couple of thoughts on this, um. So first of all, to John, to your question about the skill set, typically a launch driver needs what they call a six-pack license. And there are lots of um college kids around who embark on this. You also need to have TSA approval because you're transporting people and you need to be periodically drug tested. So those are the three criteria. I don't know, I struggle sometimes with FinCom stuff about hiring lifeguards for the beach. You know, in staffing, seasonal staffing and this has been a little bit of a learning experience, but if we've got harbor people who have enough time to be driving a launch and the launch is a fairly time-consuming endeavor, I think we should be looking at the whole picture of staffing on the water, so. Um, I I think you're in the mode of hiring seasonal employees um to do this.
Yep.
Uh, it's it's, I I do agree with you, by on shoulder seasons, you could probably fill in, but the core of the summer, you're going to need people to do this.
Absolutely, and and your point about college students is is absolutely spot on. So one of the the things that we we do have with the Reed Park docks, uh one of Tom Baker's um best, most reliable launch operators is a young woman who came to work at Reed Park uh when she was a sophomore in high school. And could tie a line off on a cleat and she became a great dock attendant. Was interested in the launch service, took the time to go out on the boat and learn how to operate the boat and got her launch driver's license, which is, which is a step lower than the six-pack. Um, much easier to get. And she uh has expressed that if there's a launch service in town, no matter who's operating it. And she uh has expressed it, if there's a launch service in town, no matter who's operating it, she would like to work. Forty hours a week. So there there are people with just launched licenses who are. Interested, retired people, as I said, I've been approached by two retired people and uh this young woman about. Keeping them in mind, uh whether we get it or to recommend them if if it goes to a private. Owner. There are people.
One more, one more question, buy on. So there were sixty people or about sixty people that 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 have these season passes. Uh, how 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 many how many dinghies are there compared to how many moorings? And you know that because you know how many mooring applications to fill out and how many of those people want dinghy uh. Want to to register a dinghy. What's that difference?
So there's there are about. Two hundred, I believe, I think the number is two hundred and twenty dinghies uh in town. Uh, the the three different locations. Yeah, I don't I don't count, we don't charge anything for yacht club or boat boat club uh dinghies. So uh just that come through the Harvard Department office.
I'm concerned that your numbers still assume that the town is putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into boats. Of its own money.
Right, no, I I didn't put that in there at all, that.
And it's bringing in by your estimate thirteen thousand dollars. And we have some doubts about maintenance. I'm not sure where we get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars back, but I'd like to see if it's actually the chose we do.
And I'm fairly certain that.
So at this point, I'd like to. See where they come back from.
Definitely more information, I think it would be.
It sounds like a really nice to have.
It would be nice to have it if it could be standalone financially.
For for my perspective, I couldn't imagine it uh uh having it. In the town if it couldn't support itself. Um, I don't know of any launch services that are supported by taxpayers. I I agree, I don't think that that would be appropriate at all, so.
Or payback on it.
Will Tom take back paper?
I think we've. Covered this, I think, by on it, you know what we're looking for. And I'm sure you will be talking with with the finance committee about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening. Bye now.
The next. The water main on Lower Forster Road. Becky.
Um, I live on Forster Road. Uh, this would not impact me whatsoever. Um, but I feel I should recuse myself.
Paperwork in the packet blends um. Forster Road includes a inadequate warming. And Lee Delacour has asked us to consider. Upgrading it. And I thought it was appropriate for the support to ask um Chuck what that would cost. Um, and talk about it. And is Chuck.
How you doing? Can you hear me? How you doing? Um, yeah, so I mean, I just took a look at the at the numbers from our. Walker Road project, which actually just started uh in earnest this week, although the they have been out there and. Uh, I think it's important, just so everybody knows, this is a, or you know, if the town were to take it on. It's a publicly bid prevailing wage job. It's not, you know, getting uh somebody with a backhoe to go out in the street, so. Um, I'm sure the numbers are probably pretty sobering for folks that were thinking about this kind of avenue. Uh, we're happy to do it, uh but you know, the moral of the story is it's about. Eight hundred and sixty feet is what I calculated based on, you know, the available information I have about the. Water main, uh the existing water main, which I believe is a two-inch. Uh, on Lower Forster Road, it does not currently loop up towards uh. Believe it's Running Ridge Road, um so. You know, from a town perspective, from a, you know, water system perspective, if we were going to take this on, I think it would be important to at least uh. Uh potentially loop it uh to make it more, you know, of a benefit for the entire water system. And so, you know, the the numbers based on the Walker Road project that's, you know, ongoing is about five hundred and twenty bucks a foot. Uh, so, you know, do the math on the, you know, footage and, you know, your. Just shy of a million dollars for the water main work and then there is, you know, some uh extras, which would be for. You know, a little bit of engineering and uh Conservation Commission uh semitels for Concom approval and then also. You know, if if we were to do this project on the Lower Forster Road, those residents would need a um. Bypass water main during the project, so they, you know, would maintain water service. So that's uh, you know, eight hundred and sixty feet of temporary main like you saw last year at School Street, that type of thing. Uh, probably smaller, but same idea. Um, so those are those are the numbers that I'm looking at, you know, if we were to take this on. One other kind of element is, you know, Bennett Street is not too far off on my. Um, you know, list of water main work that needs to be done, so. You know, potentially we could, you know, package this with Bennett Street when the time comes or accelerate the Bennett Street work, you know, if that were something the town wanted to do. Uh, and we could go from there uh to, you know, hopefully get a little bit better economy of scale. Pretty much all I have, um happy to answer any questions.
Can you hear me?
Did you get to see the numbers that Chuck worked on?
I I did, and Chuck is, you're you're right, I'm a little bit in sticker shock from your prevailing wage. Numbers, those are numbers that we don't see in the private development world um at all, so. And I guess I would also question for the town, we're looking to to supply these six houses and. I'm not sure if the looping feels more like a. Uh, a betterment to the system overall, rather than just trying to get water to these six houses, so. I'm not sure if that is fair to include that into the whole, into what we're trying to accomplish, which is just get adequate. Pressure, flow and water quality to these six houses. I guess one question that came up when I looked over these numbers and uh being a uh. You know, being a municipality that has to go prevailing wage and through the bid process. Is there any means where a project like this could be done by the private sector and sold back to the town?
That I think is a question for Greg.
So so that is a possibility, yes. It's it's similar to uh taking over a road, so. A climate developer will build a road that pounds back, so then the town will take and potentially take it over. So you can do a similar approach on the utility uh where um. Again, these, I I agree that we wouldn't ask the six six residents in question to pay for the loop. Um, but in terms of that, four hundred or eight hundred and sixty feet or so, that's just for the six residents there that. That could potentially be installed by the uh. By the owners, and then if if there was some sort of a buyback, partial buyback, if the town wanted to do that or. Uh, depending on how you feel the cost should be shared on on the.
So that was just a. Just a suggestion to uh to to try to reduce the cost of this problem, that's.
Yeah, I fully agree that private private individuals can do it less expensively than the municipality can. Given our requirement for prevailing wages, et cetera.
At at the end of the day, folks, the in the biggest reason I'm I, you know, I'm even here right now is that we do have a problem. I explained it in my email to you that I hope you've all seen and uh, you know, it's a tough situation. Uh, it was not caused by any of you in that room or the residents. It was something that happened, who knows how many decades ago and. A line was put on for a single house and over the years, the town allowed. All these houses to be tied in and there was never a requirement, and I think we all know that, I know personally that. Um, you know, developers these days are held to a different standard. Um, so we're just trying to figure out how we solve this problem that can be affordable to the residents and. Provide us with the the water that frankly we're paying for.
This is um, I don't know if if I could be recognized for a moment, this is Todd Cooper, I'm also on Forster Road and. Two doors down from Lee. Um, and I know he did, Lee did a great job describing the circumstances that we 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 have and experience. Um, but just to to give you a little bit of um. Little bit of color commentary in terms of the experience we have, you know, the at at times the the pressure is just a drip. Yeah, can't can't take a shower, just barely a drip, can't do your dishes. The it it ends up creating a lot of problems with sediment. You have um plumbing fixtures failing all the time. Um, even shut-off valves failing uh off of um, you know, uh sinks and other areas and it is um. You know, something that has been picked up by various different uh. Various different uh residents a along of of those six houses, including Paul Staretti and now Lee. So it's 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 certainly a problem, um it's something that. Um, you know, as Lee said, it's not something that anyone on this call i- is at the root of, but it's something that, you know, should be resolved. Um, it made all the more confusion, all the more confusing by the fact that that line on. You you know, in everything from the GIS package to everything else having to do with the town water information. Um, is included in all that documentation. Um, and is not. Flagged as a private line in any way, shape or form.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question about the legal structure of. The homeowners of, is this a homeowners association that takes care of this private road? Or what is what is the legal structure? Perhaps another resident. Uh, could help us here, is Jakes? But I I want to understand the legal structure that we are dealing with.
Um, Becky Jakes, twenty-two Forster Road. Um, it, there is a road association, not a homeowners association. And there are no legal implications with the road association.
Are there, there are no bylaws?
There's nothing binding. With the road association that forces anybody to pay into it or not.
So you cannot be, homeowners cannot be assessed fees?
No, so so if I may. So is this a public road or a private road?
It's a private.
It's a private road. It is plowed. Courtesy of the DPW, I mean, if. Push comes to shove, in theory, they don't have to do anything. I think it's a state law that they have, the town has to. Oh, from a safety perspective?
So I guess, um.
But there is, there, you know, not to bother people with.
Yeah, I just think it's important, um I'm not sure, I'm sure town council has looked at this. But um before, it it seems like we're just kind of outlining options here, but um to enter into. Any type of negotiation, you have to know who you're negotiating, who you're negotiating with. Who's empowered to make decisions on the other side, and I personally don't feel. Clear on that. And and the the last thing I want to do is get this town involved into a negotiation where ownership of something isn't clear. Um, because no good deed goes unpunished, so before we make any decision, I'm happy to discuss. As many options as and ideas as possible, but. I I think it's very important we get clarity on who we would be negotiating with. And who is empowered to make decisions, and if it's not all six residences. Is there a way for us to ask them to establish some sort of um association with? Uh, that outlines who the decision makers are, so if they don't have that in place right now, there's no reason that it cannot be put into place. So that the town could then negotiate effectively with decision makers. You know, in a homeowners association, you have a board of trustees, um. I'm one, so.
I just feel on, god, let let Kathy finish and then I'll recognize.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm looking at Greg, because I think. It would be very important, um because there there's probably going to be. Some shared cost by some parties, whether or not the town is involved or not, and I just think um. It's really important to get all that clear.
Yeah, I mean, that makes that makes perfect sense, and um I just hope that doesn't. I hope it doesn't take um too long to do, um. And as as Becky stated very clearly, you know, essentially, um, the road in sections is privately owned by different individuals. And then the out of um respect for for their ownership, um. Voluntarily. Um, residents on the road, you know, chip in to help out with road maintenance costs. There is no formal association, there we we would have to do something if it's in the if it's a negotiation and frankly. Just to hear that there might be a negotiation is a positive, is a step in the right direction. We appreciate, I appreciate that anyway. I don't want to speak for Lee. But um, so so I mean, that that I I find um hopeful. Um, what we don't want to see happen, I'm sure, is to to not um. You know, not to see any forward progress or to, um, you know, just to. You know, we want, we want to keep whatever kind of momentum we have, and we appreciate your attention that we have at the moment and keep that moving. Um, and so we'd have to also understand a little bit about what what the town and maybe Greg can tell us that if not now, but maybe in a follow-up email. What kind of legal structure the town would accept as a negotiating counterparty?
And and perhaps we could also ask Chuck for the standards to which. Uh, a line would have to be put in for it to be expect accepted by the town. Would you have a better idea of what the cost would be to do it front of them?
Right, and and because I'm just thinking out loud here for a minute, um without clarity on the ownership. I mean, even like an eminent domain thing isn't, I mean, possible, I mean, so it's like. We really need the 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 folks on Forster Road to, I guess, the road association or or a subset of the road association to. To to clarify things there, because I'm just not sure what the town could legally do with with that. Lack of clarity.
Could I, could I say something briefly? Thanks, um, first of all, I want to echo what Todd said is I'm very appreciative that you guys are even having this meeting. There is a difference of opinion, and I think the the problem is that. There isn't one entity, you have six customers of the water, that that buy the water from the, from the um town. That are having problems that they can't get the, they they can't get pressure and they can't get quality, so. Um, not being a condominium or being anything else, that structure doesn't exist. I agree with you. It'd be great to try to figure that out, but the reality is we've got six individuals that. Pay for water that aren't able to get it, and that's why we, that's what we have to try to figure out together. You know, we also have a concern, and I have not talked to the fire department about this, but. We have a concern that we also don't have any hydrants nearby, the closest. The closest one is up on, on Bennett Street and.
I have talked to the fire department about this.
Oh, you did? Good.
And are trucks carrying significant water and there are other streets that don't have water. And so there are, there is another tanker in Essex that comes over instantly when a fire occurs on one of the streets that doesn't have hybrids. So it's not an ideal situation, but it's not dire either. Becky?
I just have a question. The tanker that we had in town, how, how long would that provide water for for house fires?
Depends on how hard they pump.
Yeah.
But no, they really need, they, they need they would need outside assistance for anything other than something tiny and outside.
I mean, to us, to us, not the fire isn't important, but the primary issue is we don't have adequate water that we pay for and we don't have the quality. And I'm really, you know, each of us have tried to do different filtration systems to solve it. But and, and I'll be honest with you, there's a, there's a difference of opinion on the ownership. But you know, I've, I've already, the town has had their attorneys look at the ownership of the line. We've had our attorneys look at the ownership of the line and we get differences of opinion. And what I'm trying to do is talk and not, you know, not try to fight about this. See if there's a way that we can work this out to solve this problem for these six homeowners.
Hi, could I be recognized?
I'm sorry, I don't, yes, of course you may, but.
Thank you so much.
Keith, I think is, I don't have Keith's last name.
Yes.
Hi, yes, Lucy, I live on Running Ridge Road. Thank you so much and I'm treasurer of the road association here, the Forster Road Association. We were incorporated in 1957. But it's for purposes of the road maintenance. But we've become aware of this situation. And we do look at lots of different legal issues in the normal course of our governance process. But out of concern for these six residents who are also members of our road association, which is really a completely separate entity organized for purposes completely unrelated to water supply. But we certainly care about what's happening with these folks. The question earlier about what entity would, you would be negotiating with, there are six of them. The six homeowners who are paying for water service. So I, I think that, that question is, is answered. The point, a question I have is with respect to the board of selectmen, to what extent has the board been briefed on the matter at hand regarding compliance with Massachusetts water law? And because I, I don't think the water lines in the town are linked to the roadway asphalt maintenance as to whether the road is private or public. I think it's, I, I don't think there's a link there. So the first question is, I, there are Massachusetts water laws and codes and this line doesn't meet that code. And, and any municipalities providing water has to comply with Massachusetts Water Resource Regulations. So I'm not sure, you may, folks have not even had a chance to look at that yet. But the second question of two is how does the town have a written plan? A written maintenance plan and strategy that outlines the deferred maintenance on various waterways and what the projected total deferred maintenance is in dollars and what the schedule is. Is there a written maintenance plan for the town's water systems and the various things that was mentioned a few minutes ago? There are other problems in other areas. So is there a written plan that then would relate to the compliance requirements that also come down from the state and that that plan would need to address? Thank you very much.
Great.
There is a plan, there is a plan to.
So we do have a, a plan that goes out to 2050, 2049. Private community actually we needed the other night. Chuck and Dave have put a lot of time and energy into that. So we do, we do have that multi-year capital improvement plan to, to keep the system running well and to make the improvements that are going to be needed over, over the coming decades. In terms of compliance with Mass General Law, that, that assumes that the line is a municipal line. And that's where the difference of opinion lies. Town Council, reviewing the records was not able to confirm that it is a public water line. Yes, we're, our water is feeding that line. But the line itself is, is, what we can tell is not a public line. As Mr. Delica said, this disagreement over that consisted with his, his spirit of trying to work out something, that's why we're talking.
Those houses have water meters.
They do have water meters, yes. Yes. I mean, there's no question it's our water going into their, their homes.
One question. This, the comments of that gentleman just made me ask or want to ask. Do we have another situation like this in Manchester where there is a private road? And the ownership of the water lines is unclear? Or is this the only ticking? I wonder if there are any other ticking time bombs there? And if, or is there a road that we know of that's private, that owns their own water lines? That could be useful in coming up with a solution? Has another group of homeowners come to some agreement? So I'm looking for an analogous situation here. Do we know?
Or even sewer.
Or even sewer, something, something analogous that is a best practice we can leverage or.
Is it, is it safe to say that this was once a line to feed one house?
Correct.
Right.
That's, that's our understanding. The second house.
Then someone decided to piggyback on that.
Right.
Back on that.
That's my understanding of the history.
It was never brought in as a, a main.
Correct.
And the only discussion when we started talking about entities and who we're negotiating with is only because there was discussions about working with a private contractor to reduce costs to get away from David Bacon, to get away from.
And Brian, Brian, just to clarify that, and Greg is right, there's a difference of opinion. So I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but the, with the issue, when that line that fed one house, there's no question that was a private service line. As under what our lawyers have told us is that once it became feeding multiple houses, it becomes defined as a main, not a service, because now the town is using it to transport the water, to sell it to a multiple services, which to multiple homes, excuse me, which then brings it to a definition of a main. So again, there's a difference of opinion on that, but that's the, the way that we've heard about.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that I agree that we have to come up with a solution and now we're just trying to hash out how to, how to get there.
So, so questions, that first house, that first house paid for that line to go up the road? To feed water?
Yes.
I assume so.
And the second house hooked in, I don't know, in 1945 or something? And I don't know if they asked any questions, they just knew there was a water line there.
They added them.
And they just hooked in and maybe they didn't ask anybody anything.
We don't know.
We don't know. But in theory, a developer, I mean, all part of the process of developing, they, they'd have to provide for getting water. You know, the utilities, some of them.
Right.
And so those folks kind of in effect, peed back on the first folks. And they didn't have to pay for the development of a second water line to come in there.
That's correct.
If this was a new development, they would have dropped in.
Yeah, no, I, so it's.
Yeah, and if it had happened in the last 30 years, somebody would have said something.
Yeah, correct. Okay.
So back to Kathy's question, I'll have to do some homework to see.
Because what I want to avoid, you know, we definitely want to help these folks and that's the sense of urgency. But if we do wind up with some kind of a partnership here, I don't want another mushroom blooming on the other side of the town, right? And have to necessarily come up with an entirely different solution. I'd rather know what's, what are we dealing with and, and let's make a decision we can stand up.
So for, for example, Boardman Avenue.
Okay.
Is, is a private road.
Okay.
They are served by town water, but it's their private line.
Their line.
And they just, they just upgraded that line a couple, couple, three years ago.
So that's their precedent. And do we know what type of legal structure they have, those homeowners? Or is it as?
I don't know in detail, I believe they have an association.
An association. I mean, to me, that would be the proper, you know, I'm no lawyer, but you'd want something like that so there are clear decision makers, et cetera.
Yeah, so excuse me, so to, so to that point, the Boardman folks paid for that line.
Correct.
Which was put in.
Can I, can I jump in here? No, that's, that's actually not. Before we go down this road, that's, that's just not correct. The Boardman water main, we did pay for. It is a town looped water main.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The roadway work was undertaken by the Boardman Association. There are several instances of shared services around town that, similar to this situation, the difference being that sometimes the services are on private driveways, this is a private road. So that, that's not uncommon. What typically defines the public water system is the shut off that the town owns that shut off the, the services. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on Forster, but you know, there, I can think of another one off of Pine Street where we would be able to shut off the, the water to a couple of different residences on a shared service. That happens often when there's leaks or, you know, stuff like that where the property owners, whether there's an association or not, I agree totally that there should be associations that are responsible for these things, but that's not always the case. And that's not something that's in my control or DPW certainly. And so that, that does happen. The, the largest one I can think of is Coolidge Point, which is, you know, several houses out there and an unlooped water main. They even have hydrants, but there's, there's just no mechanism, I guess, if, if that were to, you know, if there were to be a, a larger issue out there. And then the, the other thing, this does happen on sewer quite often, where the town only owns the sewer main in the street, but there are several services where laterals to several different houses where, you know, we have no control necessarily. Now, there should be bylaws for water and sewer that cover these instances. But in the case of Manchester, I'm not so sure that that happens either. So, you know, there's certainly things on our end that probably need to be tightened up with respect to this kind of thing, but also I think the property owners and associations would, would need to have a similar working bylaws or, you know, whatever structure.
Organization. I think we'd be, I think we'd be great with doing the road work on the cleanup. I like the Boardman model.
Yeah.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's what I was saying when I started my conversation was, you know, there, there is a element of this where the town could take ownership of the main in the street, not the ownership of the street or, you know, infringe on the Forster Association. And it will be a town water main as it, as it is further up Forster. But this, this is just not that case because it's not a looped water main or, you know, serving any other town purpose. And like was, I think we're all in agreement that this was a single service line that was piggybacked onto others, probably with a handshake and a, you know, attaboy from a developer. So I don't see how, you know, the town would necessarily take responsibility for that. And I don't expect these homeowners to, you know, responsibility for that, but that, you know, that's where we are.
And appreciate that. It's sort of the conflict.
Excuse me, Todd.
No, it's, it's Lee, you're interrupting.
Oh, sorry. Just, just to make a little clarification about the water on Forster Road. It goes, the, the main from Bennett or the, the water line from Bennett only goes up as far as a culvert. And from there up, everybody else is on well, unless they've been able to tie in through Running Ridge Road. So there, there are two completely separate water feeds coming in. And the one on that they're talking about only goes so far up the road to serve those initial houses. And it does not go under the culvert or through.
But a majority of those additional houses on Forster Road are on that upper main, I believe. And there's only, I believe there's only four houses that actually are still on wells. The rest all tie into that town main. So it's these six houses that have been kind of left out of the, the loop.
Okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak? Anyone in the room who has anything you can contribute to this?
Yeah. Oh.
Yes.
Sarah Melish, Levin Bennett. I just think the situation is unfortunate and that the town needs to help these homeowners. Everyone has the right, have decent, and I believe these properties are too small for well zone. Right, they're very small properties. It just seems like the town has to do right by them. That's my initial.
Don't we have to talk to her as a finance committee?
I'm sorry, I have forgotten the name of the man who had his hand up.
Oh, yes, thank you so much. And I, I already did speak, but I'll just one other question and then a comment. Question being on Boardman Avenue, what was that process like? And was the town, the town wound up paying for that line? And why is that the case that that's a private road? It sounds like perhaps it was originally part of a loop and was always considered a, a town line, but it would be interesting to know that, those details. But the other issue is I think for these six homes, they're paying for water services like everybody else is paying for water.
Let, let me just put in a word of correction here. The water service is paid based on the amount of water you use. And if they're not getting water.
Then, okay.
It's, we're getting water, we're just, there are times when if, if three or four people try to take a shower at the same time, there's not enough pressure. So you just have to plan your showers around your neighbors.
Sorry, that was slightly a cheap shot on my part, but you don't pay for water that you're not getting, you just, and, and that really isn't the problem here.
But we are, we are paying for water that is not of good quality.
Right.
That's right. I mean, I think if you're not getting it, I think you can also make the argument that the intention is that you're entitled to it and that the services are provided.
Well, again, I, I think we're going back and forth here, but just to, again.
Chuck, could you?
I'm sorry.
Say, say a word or two about how the decision was made to put private money into the water main on Boardman Avenue.
Certainly, so, you know, there, again, Boardman is not so special. There, there is several private roads in town that have public water mains. So Highland, Jersey Lane, Forster on the Upper Side. So like there, if we, when we get to, if you look on my capital improvements plan for the water main, you know, there are portions of Jersey Lane on that, Highland Ave, Forster Road, that are public water mains that I think the town will need to replace that water main in, you know, due time in the next 25 years. So that, that's not special. Boardman was at the top of that list, that so much so that it was done three or four years ago because it was raking all the time and causing. Because it was uh, raking all the time and causing service outages, uh, you know, to to much larger areas. Um, so that that is how it becomes a priority. Um, certainly, as I've, as I've said. Uh, and all it takes is money. Uh, if if the town, this board or, you know, town meeting wants to. You know, give us additional money to do additional water mains. You know, and we ha- have some sort of agreement with these homeowners, like it can be done, there there's nothing special about this water main. Uh, but I will say that this is a. You know, we've considered a private section and service, these homeowners that are on this section, the the. You know, it was said that, you know, why can't we just do it with a private company? You can. We would not, the town would not get in the way of that, whether it's extending six individual one inch services or one six inch. You know, service and you know, the 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 six own homeowners making their own association, like that is. That is a feasible alternative to path forward for them to get a better water quality. Every. New house that's built, they have to build their own water service into their house. So this is, this is not some special circumstance. The question is. Who's gonna have to pay for it because of the price tag and, you know, from my perspective, we do not have a town appropriation to pay for this work. Uh, for Boardman Ave, we did for our future work on other private roads, we will. Um, so that's, that's where we're at now. Um, so I guess I just, I just wanna say that from our perspective.
Beginning to go beyond what I'm prepared to put up with for people talking over each other.
Excuse me.
Um, Becky.
Um, Becky James, twenty two Forster Road. So then, I guess, um, my my question would be. For this group of the the six homes that are being discussed. What would their next step be? For and to whom would they come back?
I I think.
Continuing.
I identified several steps. One is to have some sort of an association with which the town can negotiate. Another, I think, would be to have. Our lawyer, the towns, town council, um, and the um, homeowner, the. Six homeowners council, at least look at each other's arguments. And see if they can come to some common understanding. Or suggest a way out. This this is. The the question of who allowed this to happen and whose fault it is, is not something we're going to solve here. But if if the two groups of lawyers can figure out something. That would let us move forward. I think that's the second.
Would it, would it make sense for, because it does, I I I think there's general consensus. That it is more expensive for the town to repair this line. Would it make sense? For the six homeowners to get some private estimates, real estimates. On what it would take for them to pay for. The upgrade.
Yep, and and make sure that it is upgraded to the.
And then finally. Greg, I guess, what other circumstances under which something like that might be turned over to the town in some way?
Unless someone on the board has more to say on this. Um, I think we've made a little progress. I think there's a general feeling that this is a problem that that needs. Something other than it's not on our schedule for the next twenty five years.
We put it on our action items.
No, no, it's not on our action items. But, um, I appreciate your time, the time that you spent on this, and appreciate your very clear explanation of, um. What's involved, um, and I like your, your diagram of where you might end up with a closer. And everyone else who's spoken, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. No problem, we'll be in touch. Thanks, guys.
Okay. The next. Um, item we have is.
So yeah, just wanted to give an update on on the efforts that have um, have been happening and are continuing to happen. Um, the the visual group is finishing up. Uh, what we consider phase two of some of the work, um, that has been. Uh, funded through through various grants, uh, with Harvard and graduate school of design. So the second, so the first effort was focused on. Understanding the magnitude and. The problem in terms of what a, what's, what about sea level rise we can be anticipating, just. Looking at the various models, looking at what a uh, category three storm hurricane. Might do to the area, where to come through, uh, to have us get a better sense of. How do we protect ourselves against such such events? Um, phase two has been focused on looking at some of the. Natural resources of the area and how those natural resources could be better managed so that they can act as a. Buffer, if I can use that word, uh, to help mitigate some of the impacts of large storms and that work is is. Will be be finishing up over the next month and a half or so, uh, certainly by the first of the year, we'll have uh, final reports. Based on the uh, that analysis of our various ecosystems and how we might better care for those ecosystems. So that they can help us going forward. And now this third phase, um. Funds from congressional, congressionally designated, uh, spending, uh, approval, uh, through NOAA. It is to fund additional work, um, with not only. Uh, Harvard and doing some additional uh, studies, but also funding. Various uh, local organizations and outreach and community discussions and community uh, education. On the various issues and and understandings that are being uh, developed. And so this third phase, which is, which will be getting underway first of the year, uh, is targeted to. Uh, as I say, do some of that education and outreach, but also look at some additional areas of study, looking at. What finances, what are the challenges that municipalities will have, um. With funding some of these needs, uh, whether it be uh, higher seawalls or. Elevating structures or uh. Trying to improve some of these natural ecosystems to help us. So how do we finance that? Uh, second areas, looking at governance, are there different ways of. Communities to interact and to share resources and to share information, uh, as we try to tackle some of these issues. And another area we'll look at, um, better ways to engage the public. Uh, you know, how best to reach out and how best to have good dialogue in communities and provide us with some. Uh, some models and some um, templates that we might be able to follow. Uh, and lastly, it'll be following up on some of the uh, nature based solutions that is looking at. Those various ecosystems and what additional improvements could be made. And so this is all work that'll be taking place over the next couple of years. So this grant uh, goes through the end of uh, twenty five, goes through December of twenty five. And and like I say, it'll be getting underway in earnest, uh, first of the year. So, so I wanted to give you that update. And as I indicated in my notes, we we will be looking for some assistance in in. In just having the administrative pieces of the grant. And the town of Manchester is serving as as the lead applicant, so the funds pass through us. And then we pay out, pay it out to the different uh, sub awardees, and we could use some assistance. To manage those um, sub grants and those subcontract. And so coming back to you, uh, probably the first of the year with some proposals, uh, one of, one of the likely. People who will be submitting a proposal would be Town Green, since I serve on on that board, I I need to step back. And not be involved in that selection process, uh, so we'll look towards maybe a couple, couple of you working with. Other town staff to review those and and make a selection going forward.
I'm happy to help out with that if that. I'll have a lot more time starting in the new year.
Don't say that too loudly.
Is this being done, um, will we have someone from the planning board sitting in on this as well?
Um, certainly welcome that, yes.
Might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, yeah, and conservation.
Yep, yes.
Sustainability.
Yep.
So, so yes, we need to, we need to bring more folks into uh, into the fold, so to speak.
But for this, this aspect, what you're talking about, um, you don't need all those people for that.
From the administrator point of view, no.
Yeah.
But certainly, as as the work gets underway, uh, and as we develop better. Repositories for all the information that's been gathered, different websites and making sure that that gets disseminated well. Um, and broadly, we certainly could use help with that.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. So there are two, two things to be done. One is to have. You you think two individuals who will do the evaluating, um, of the sub grants. And and that you would suggest the two people from the slide board, I wonder if it makes sense to have a person from the slide board and a person from the planning board.
That's fine, we're content, happy to reach out, get one of each.
Yeah, if we could, two people can work together, three people. Yeah, yeah, if, would that be acceptable to you, Becky?
Absolutely, yeah. And I I I, but I I kind of agree with John that I think, um. Comm comm person might be helpful, even at that. Level to be looking from that perspective as well. Uh, and I don't think three is impossible. In some ways, it might be. Tiebreaker, exactly.
Um, so this project, so this is a project. And the end date, according to this information, is September thirtieth of twenty twenty five.
Yes.
So are you, um. What is the outcome, other than a, is it just the final report that's the outcome? Of this project? A list of recommendations, I mean, is is that the deliverable?
Uh, there's, there's more than that, so so. Uh, one set of deliverables are various reports that the various faculty. And and postgrad be working on, um, the various. Uh, other sub awardees will be working, for example, um. Uh, working with those high school green teams, and each of those high school green teams will be doing a project. So whatever project they complete will be a deliverable for that sub awardee. There will be a uh, a series of of uh, of. Webinars that'll be hosted. So that's another deliverable. There'll be a couple of conferences that'll be done, so that's another deliverable.
Okay, so this strikes me as something with clear deliverables, right?
Yes.
And who on the town staff is going to be the project manager? For this?
So it's, um. There's a steering committee?
That wasn't like, I understand there's going to be committees.
No, I.
This many deliverables with deadlines, you typically want. One person to.
Right, so that's, that's what I'm saying, we would, we would contract that out.
You're gonna contract that, okay, so you hire a contracted.
Basically, a contracted administrator, contracted administrator to ensure that those deliverables are being delivered on time and on budget.
Okay, so I I was just using different terminology, um, I'm looking for a project manager to make sure things get done on time, okay?
Yeah.
So that's great. And then are you, so then. That, would that person be the one to, um. Collect the other project team members assemble, the project team needed to. Execute these different deliverables?
Yes, yes, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
And so there's a regional steering committee, but I think it would also be helpful to have a a Manchester. As you just suggested, um, to get more involved and engaged with it. Would be very helpful.
So should I? Reach out to the chairs of the two boards and have them put it before their boards?
Yeah, thank you.
And and question, so refresh my memory because I know you went over this a number of months ago. The key man group that is steering all of this. Is comprised of.
So there's, um. What's called the Cape Town Coalition?
Yes.
Private Coalition.
Yeah, that's what I want the refreshment on.
Which is, um, a less formal group, it's it's basically volunteers. And then there's also Town Green, which is a more formal structure, it's a formal nonprofit. With a, with a one page staff. Um, and a board of directors.
Okay.
So those are the two groups, Town Green and the Coalition. Working together, um, and plus we 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 work with the four different municipalities, we have contact with. Each of the four.
But they're involved with. Spending some of the money or distributing it to appropriate uh, folks, depending upon which part you're talking about.
Yes, but a lot of that will be handed over to the project manager.
Okay, yes, alright.
Yes. But that's the structure.
Is there anyone online who would like to? Resolve the issues that you.
I'm good.
And I'll reach out to you, Greg, to get a little more.
Yeah, I can, I can provide you with a nice summary.
The better way all the way to read is on updates. I have just kind of a brief one, but I'd like Greg to elaborate. So I listened in on the FinCon meeting last week. Um, but I had a little trouble hearing through the Zoom call, I couldn't hear everything that was said, but there was some discussion about. Um, where we put our town cash. Um, Mike Pratt had uh, gone to a state, um. Conference.
Finance committee.
Finance committee, um, conference, and he learned of other avenues that. Seemed like almost every other city or town in Massachusetts was using, but. Um, could you elaborate on that conversation a little bit, because I had a, I had a hard time hearing the whole discussion?
So there's a, there's a state run mutual fund. Uh, that many communities. Um, place their their excess funds in as a way to, uh. And have that mutual fund manage the investments. So we, we of late have not done that, we've used, um. Various banks that we interact with, and then we have a investment firm that we have. We did an RP for, selected them. So that was sent to the treasurer. So the discussion the other night was, should we revisit the MMDT, it's called. As a, as a. Potential additional vehicle to uh, use for our our funds, for investment purposes.
If I, what I think I heard was that Mike viewed it as a way to reduce our risk. There have been, you know, some banks that have gone out of business recently, uh, in the news and the way this entity. Uh, this mutual fund was diversifying, um, the the load, it might reduce our risk. What I didn't hear was, did he also think we could get a better return in a, in a safe way? Uh, that's the part I didn't hear.
I think. I think they're comparable returns. Um, it does feel like it's probably a lower fee, but that's, that's need to verification of that, that data. So certainly the MMDT has a very low, uh, low fee.
Okay.
It's, um. So it's something to take a look at.
So what, did someone take the action, go check it out there?
That that's the action, so we haven't done that yet.
Okay, so you're, um. Um, remember your team is gonna take that action, okay?
Yeah, yeah, that, so the action that was for, um, Town Treasurer to put a summary.
Right, okay.
Of of how monies are currently being invested.
Yeah.
And then, um, circulate that and then have a a further discussion after everyone has a more common basis of understanding.
Okay, right.
How funds are currently invested.
That was the main thing I wanted to bring up.
Board of Health, they've been working on a brochure design, including what the, um, the Board of Health duties are. As well as the role of the public health nurse. And food inspections, what their next, the budget requests are, they're working on a tobacco permit. Um, I guess this, as it pertains to businesses. Um, it's. Um, it's environmental, tobacco, marijuana, and electronic delivery regulation. Um, and then. The annual permits that they were calling. That's, yeah.
I'm still working on the weather regulations as well.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, well, maybe just a couple of things. I should have a, uh. I exchanged some information with some of the folks in sustainability and, uh, on water and should have a model that you can work with this week. See how that works. And the seniors are pretty interested on broadening transportation opportunities here, point to point. And I think we're going to explore that in more depth in January. I will chat with you, um. On that a little bit more, uh, Greg, but, um. You know, looking for, it, it just is not, not enough service, enough different times of the week to, to meet everybody's needs.
They looked at the, um, what they're doing in Gloucester, the van you can order on an app.
The K A D A, Cape Anne Transit Authority?
It's, um, I think it's run by K A D A.
Yeah.
Um, but you, there, you know, pickup spots and you can ask for it to arrive on an app and it seems to be.
I don't know about the app. There is one, I got a K A D A program.
Yeah, this one you, you pick up on an app and, um, I'm not, I haven't used it myself, but it's definitely something to look at because it.
Sure.
It's something they started small, I believe, and, and, um. You know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an on-demand model, but there are set pickup spots, but they'll drop you off anywhere. That's the way it works.
Yeah, these folks are more interested in getting picked up at home. These are people that are housebound.
Understand.
More on that.
School committee two weeks ago. Thirteen days ago. Discussed what. They were looking for, um, in the budget and they agreed. That they didn't want to lose any services. On the other hand, they had to be sensitive to the needs of their communities. You will hear more. Um, while they are. They got a list from, um. Superintendent of, um, organizations that do. Audits, to use a forbidden word, uh, of, of school systems. Um, and agreed that Pam would look into the strengths and weaknesses. Not, I think none of them were private organizations, but, um, what, what. Uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education can do. Um, whether they want to have something that's specific in areas or whether they want. A top to bottom survey, um, and I. Failed to write down the initials of the other organization which they thought might be, uh, able to do a low cost. I think there was a suggestion and it may not have been at the meeting that, that, um. Perhaps Essex could spend its money, um, um, reviewing the review work. None of this is going to get much done on the budget. It's going to be presented on the thirteenth of December.
Oh, that's pretty close.
And is there any, um, that big joint meeting we had of all the boards? I thought there was going to be another one. Do we have a timeframe?
I don't believe we have a timeframe, um, but I think.
Maybe for January sometime, that we need to, we need to get that out and tell it yourselves.
After. Schools presented its initial budget and, and people have a little bit of time to look at it. But.
Yeah.
And also, you know, holidays and.
Would you like a motion, pardon, the consent agenda?
Yes.
I move that the select board approve the consent agenda.
Becky?
Yes.
And John? Yes.
Someone ought to tell the, um. Lawyer for the therapy with the trust that Gar is not the person to send the letter to.
On the, yes.
A little behind.
And I, I assume Debbie that she will be sending him a nice note and you might. Gently bring him up today.
Yes.
I can be brief, um, uh, working on the. Troubleshooting electronic building system, making sure that. Another failure as we did at the last time meeting. So I, there's some good progress being made. Hope to, hope to report to you, certainly early first of the year, um, some solution going forward. So that's that. Um, the, the community center is, I'm sure everybody realizes, the, uh. The board of, of the community center has, has voted to exercise their option to, uh. Relocate the building, so that puts any discussions on a town lease, um, on hold. Obviously, the Association Harvard Point cannot lease a building that, that they don't know, so. Uh, that has to be resolved first, uh, so if, if indeed the community center is able to relocate the building, then. Then our involvement will. There will be any, uh, uh, if, if indeed that doesn't happen, then, then we're able to restart the discussions about lease. Uh, then, then we will. So we will see how that all transpires over the next, uh. Next few months. And then, uh, yeah, it discussed on school, but we just, we just talked about that, so I don't, so much more there.
Yes, um. I move that we go into executive session for M G L chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three to consider the purchase. Exchange lease for value of real property, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And the chair so declares it and not to return to open session, and I do so declare it. I also move that we go continue into, onto an executive session from G L. Chapter thirty eight, chapter forty eight, A two, to conduct strategies. Strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating positions of the public body and the chair so declares. And not to return to open session.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And so, yeah, John?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to stand up for a few minutes. Okay.